Lord, we're coming for you this afternoon. Just want to thank you, Lord, for many blessings. Lord, we thank you for the city of West Memphis. Lord, we ask you continue, let your blessings flow through this city. Cover this city with your blood, wrap it in your love. Lord, let your mercy abide around here, through here, and over here, oh God. Lord, we thank you right now, oh God, because you've been so good and you've been so kind. Continue to give our mayor the vision, oh God. Continue to let this council come together and make good decisions, oh God. Lord, we bless your holy name right now, God. We give you all the glory, all the honor, and all the praise. And thank you for our police department, thank you for our fire department guard, thank you for our engineers, oh God. Lord, we thank you for our sanitation department, oh God. Lord, let's keep on blessing them, keeping them safe, oh God, in this city, oh God. As you cover this city with your blood, fill it with your love, wrap it in your mercy, oh God. Let people be saved and delivered in this city. Let love abide in this city, oh God. Let your glory be known and shone in this city, oh God, in the name of Jesus. Now, thank you right now, oh God, for what you're doing and what you're gonna do in this city. In the name of Jesus, I pray.
Amen.
Amen. Let's place the flag, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Let's, I'm gonna call this meeting to order. Mr. City Clerk, will you call the roll, please?
Mayor McClendon.
Present.
City Attorney Stevenson.
Here.
City Treasurer Suter.
Here.
Councilmember Bruce.
Present.
Councilmember Kat.
Here.
Councilmember Crum.
Here.
Councilmember Harris.
Here.
Councilmember Hope.
Here.
Councilmember Hutchinson.
Here.
Councilmember Muhammad.
Present.
Councilmember Mindy.
Here.
Councilmember Murray.
He called.
Councilmember Willis.
Here.
We have nine out of ten present. I'm gonna call this meeting to order. Uh, can I, was there any corrections to the minutes? Councilman Kay called this in. Was there any other correction?
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
opposed? We had no old business, I mean, the minutes approved, we had no old business. We do need to add an ordinance, uh, can I get the motion in second to add an ordinance to, retroact the twenty-five, twenty-one, twenty-five sixty-one?
It's an ordinance to amend twenty-five sixty-one.
Ordinance to amend, we need to add and then amend it.
We're gonna amend it, uh, it needs to be added.
Need to be added.
Motion, motions on the floor.
Second.
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
opposed? Is added. Uh, now, I'm sorry, yeah, Mr. Clerk, uh, Ms. Muhammad. Title alone. O-one and the add will be O-two?
And R-one.
And R-one.
Thank you.
Can I get that second?
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
opposed? Now, Mr. City Attorney?
This is R-one. Resolution expressing the willingness of the city of West Memphis to utilize federal aid funds for the city project of Rich Road Bridge Replacement.
Can I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
opposed? It passes. Mr. City Clerk, will you get R-one in number?
Twenty-two, five-seven.
Twenty-two, five-seven. O-one?
O-one is an ordinance granting a special use permit for the property located at fourteen hundred Ingram, permitting a one-hundred-and-fifty-foot-tall communications tower in a C-two open-display commercial district.
It'll be back in two weeks for a second reading. O-two?
O-two is an ordinance to amend ordinance number twenty-five sixty-one, authorizing aldermen and members of the city council to purchase services from Charles Suter Jr., DBA Suter Construction Co., Inc., and for other purposes.
Mayor may I ask that we spend the rules and place it on second reading?
Can I get, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
opposed? City Attorney?
An ordinance to amend ordinance number twenty-five sixty-one, authorizing aldermen and members of the city council to purchase services from Charles Suter Jr., DBA Suter Construction Co., Inc., and for other purposes.
Mayor may I ask that we further spend the rules and place it on the third and final reading?
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
opposed?
This is third reading of an ordinance to amend ordinance number twenty-five sixty-one, authorizing aldermen and members of the city council to purchase services from Charles Suter Jr., DBA Suter Construction Co., Inc., and for other purposes.
Got a motion, second to approve?
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? Okay, the auditors met with me yesterday, and what they seen was that, uh, Mr. Suter had now became our new treasurer who had done some work previously for the, uh, airport, and they just asked that we, uh, retroacted back to January first of twenty-twenty just to make sure that he's covering and they can report it in their filings.
Thank you, and I know that whenever we have, we have the city council or, uh, city, uh, board or something like this, we have to, this is, uh, this has to be done. I just wanted the public to know that this has to be done.
Then, if further discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
opposed? Mr. City Clerk, will you get that?
That number is twenty-five eighty-two.
Twenty-five eighty-two. Uh, permission request. Permission for Mayor McClendon and City Attorney Stevenson to sign the agreement of understanding between the city of West Memphis and the Arkansas Department of Transportation. I think the motion is second to approve that?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
opposed? It passes. Can I get a motion in second to table this first contract on the parks?
Make a motion to table indefinitely.
Second.
Uh, in this, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
opposed? All right, now, I'm gonna ask, on the second permission request, that we amend the title of that to include all four parks, which would be Teal and Rogers, High Tower Park, Worthington Park, and Franklin Park, as well as we amend the amount to be nine million and fifty thousand dollars. Can I get a motion in second?
Second.
Uh, any discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
opposed? Sure. That passes.
If I may, council's approved. Architects will have to work with you, since we do, we had not approved this in the twenty-twenty-one budget. So the minute they give you the amount, if you would let us know, we draft the budget amendment, we'll bring it back to you in two weeks. Again, no money can be spent until you approve the budget amendment.
Okay.
So, but.
All right. On this, on this, uh, permission for, uh, for the mayor to, next is permission for the mayor to sign a refinancing bond for the city of West Memphis Airport with Raymond James. And before I ask you all to make that amendment, I do want to disclose something real quick. Just talking with the auditors, I did, uh, disclose to them that Raymond James did invite me as a guest to, uh, Memphis Grift the Gang. And I just want to make sure that I haven't called any councilperson to persuade them to vote for this, I know way. And I want to put that on the record, because I did explain that to the auditors, so they know, it wasn't no issue, but I just want to make sure I protect myself of, of any, anything crazy. I just want to make sure it's at there. So, anything like that to them, and they, they offer me, and they said it's a good idea, so you all do know. Now, I'm gonna ask you all, you all would also amend this agreement that we add the Friday firm to service our bond council, which is a firm that the city has used many years of the Friday firm to have bond council. You got a motion in second to amend to add the, uh, Friday firm?
No. Both? I didn't understand the amendment. I mean, I.
Okay.
Every bond issue the city's ever done is it's, it's basically two structures. You have an agent, and then you have someone like Raymond James Stevens, Stevens. So there's a firm that handles everything, but your agent represents you and makes sure that everything is done the way you want it done.
Mm-hmm.
So, um.
Well, I mean, that was in those two contracts from, uh, Gary Architect. It was saying that they were.
Councilman, that's two different situations.
I know, I know, but I'm just saying it's a familiar, evidently.
Familiar.
I talked to them, they've been calling me, and, uh, we just want to hire someone that's on our side to do what they did to make sure that our interests are taken care of and that we're protected, and that's why we did that, just to protect our city.
All right. Uh, I think the motion is second to approve that amendment?
Yeah, Ms. Harris made the, the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Mr. Willis.
Willis. Okay.
Yeah, my, yeah. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
opposed? The amendment is, uh, approved. Now, I'm gonna ask, with the amendment, um, permission for me to sign the refinancing bond, the letter of intent, uh, financing bond for the city of West Memphis, the airport with Raymond James, is gonna save us four hundred and thirty thousand dollars. I got a motion in second?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
opposed? It passes. Um, permission for the mayor to use a hundred and nine thousand of the Main Street money to cover the Main Street demolition projects located at five-oh-one East Broadway, the old railroad depot building, and eight-oh-one East Broadway Street.
Mayor, is this gonna be under, uh, bids?
It already has been bid it up. The build, the, actually, the buildings have already been condemned for years. And we re, we rebid it out just to try to get the owners to see they're gonna do something, and they ain't doing nothing with the building.
Nothing.
We had, uh, two, two bidders on this to demo.
Mayor, if I may, I just want to clarify, there will be a lien placed against both parties?
There would definitely be a lien.
Can I say one thing for the sake of the minutes? Okay? When the discussion come, you need to make a motion in second, because that's how she get confused.
Okay.
Yeah, if you don't mind, I'm just saying before you start the discussion.
Who made the motion?
I, I think I made the motion. I did make the motion to approve this.
Okay, you second, okay.
Okay.
Now, we got, we got a motion in second to approve, but, um, it was two bids given. One was from, uh, the Howard Construction, and one from Chris Constru, Contract, uh, Construction Company.
Right.
On, on those, we had many buildings that was on that list, and later, you know, you all, if you all wish, you would have to find other funds to, to turn those building down. This is not a community development block grant money being used, none of that money being used. This money is straight out of Main Street, and the reason why I'm going to the Main Street budget is because these buildings are actually in Main Street, where we have some other buildings that's on Broadway that, uh, if we come up with some kind of money somewhere, we may better use it to tear them down.
Mayor, if I may, uh, going back to our previous conversation about this building, eight-oh-one?
Mm-hmm.
Um, I would like to maybe amend that for now, and let's have some more discussion on it.
I mean, my question, what more discussion that you want to have? Because eight-oh, eight-oh-nine have already committed to donating they building to Main Street. It's already happened. I mean, what I'm saying, and I, and I respect that, if you all get the, the amendment done, that'd be fine, but I'm trying to clean up East Broadway, and I don't want to keep that blight there. There's no reason for us to.
Hey, we all are trying to clean, clean that up.
So, so why would we, why would you want to take it off the table?
I, I'm not taking it off the table. What I'm saying is, is to turn it into this open park. That's all I'm saying.
Okay.
Excuse me.
We don't need no more parks.
Councilwoman Muhammad?
Right, right. I do, I do really agree that we do not need any more parks, but in light of Ms., Ms., Ms. Abernathy, I would like her to come again, if council doesn't mind, to explain what her proposal is for the eight-oh-one East, East Broadway. Just let us know what you're talking about, because we're talking about tearing all of this down. If you don't mind coming back to the podium and explaining your first proposal.
And let me say something real quick now. I know he said amended, making, you know, statement amended, but, but you taking back, right? Because he didn't get a second, that's what I'm saying.
Uh, Council Willis?
No, I'm talking about the first one. I'm talking about when he said amended, the motion dealing with, you know.
Oh, no, no.
So that's why I say I want to make sure, because he messes up on the minutes, that's why I turned it back.
I, I'm not asking for an amendment, I'm just asking.
No, no, I'm not talking about you.
If you'll just explain again, we are talking about demol, demolishing that building, but explain to us what your proposal is to do with that property.
Okay. I represent Main Street, West Memphis. We receive grant funds from the state legislation to put towards improving the Main Street area. And as I stated before, we try to help all businesses, all property owners to maintain their buildings and give them the grant funds to help them. We have a history for the K-WM radio station. I'm in the building with the actual room. I, we cannot do anything to honor that, because it belongs to Regions Bank. We have tried to promote the K-WM, because we get people from out of the country coming to my office wanting to see the original site. Example is a couple from Sweden, excited to see the K-WM, um, radio station. So we would like to propose not completely tearing down eight-oh-one, because it does have temporary walls that the city put up. It does have structural corners, and it does have steel beams. If we open it up, we can move our K-WM products, we can enhance the history of K-WM, we can create a mural and lights, but we do ask that you accept the property from the owner, uh, and maintain it, which would not be much other than cleaning up trash, because we think we got to, although we know we need to destroy, take down buildings, we want to also overcome blight, and more empty lots just look like that. We are getting people who are interested in, in, um, purchasing property in the downtown area. Uh, this would be a site that could show how we can repurpose a building uh, so that it will create tourism, locals. And I've given you the several, um, steps as to how we would like to see this done. Main Street can offer the grants, the funds, to set up that. We just cannot own a building or maintain it, but we will certainly give it our best shot, because we do use, uh, Women's Correctional Center to try to clean our streets on a regular basis, um, and hope to get back to that after this COVID situation. So, we consider it a win, a win for West Memphis, instead of another empty space. Do you have any questions?
I do. Ms. Abernathy, can y'all re, revive the building completely and make a museum out of it?
No, ma'am. We've had a study done, and it shows that we really do not qualify for a museum. Um, I'd love it, really, I would, but because of our community and our surrounding area, a museum is just not beneficial, but we still want to preserve our history. We still want to teach our, our students and our residents to be proud of the history that is West Memphis. But I, we cannot refurbish the building, but it is solid enough to make it an open-air, um, you know, not a park.
Still a lot of open air, with these bicycles, and nobody can ride them, you know? And I just want to see something going, a business going.
We do too, but we're not gonna have a business with a bunch of empty lots.
No, but if they tear it down, and maybe somebody come in and build something.
I believe the owner has looked very hard to find buyers for that property. You know, right now, we have a lot of absentee owners. We have people who are not willing to maintain their buildings, um, that are still easily maintained. And so, right now, because we have an opportunity to encourage growth in the downtown area and show that, um, any investors might be interested because we make these efforts. Um, and we, like I said, we have the money. We'd like to spend it.
Councilman Hutchinson?
Ms. Abernathy, um, first of all, thank you for taking the time to come explain. I, I want to ask you, in the time that you've been on the board, now, is, is it, have you all ever wanted to do this in any other area on Main Street?
Yes, we have. We spent two years trying to put the same kind of outdoor site at the park next to Regions. And we spent a lot of money and time investigating how we could do that. Um, in the end, Regions did not agree with us. So it has been on our sites for four years or more.
Let me add this.
Just one more question I've done, I just wanted to ask this, and I, I want to make certain that you were on the board, the, the, uh, water tower that we have now.
All right, let me explain something. I'm the executive director of Main Street. It's a nonprofit.
I understand.
We did not fund the water tower. The city funded it, out of the very.
I was here when we did it.
Right.
Let me ask you though, Ms. Abernathy, and the reason why I ask, and, and you kind of hesitated, and I wanted to finish the question. The water tower that, that's presently there now, the ideals and the, the, uh, the, the, your board, are you saying that you all, that didn't kind of, kind of be, was birthed out of the board from Main Street? Was it?
With the water tower?
Yes, ma'am.
No, ma'am, it was never our idea. We refused to take the water tower when it was, um, but the proposal was to donate it, and we could not, because we don't have the funds to maintain it. The city was then accepting of the water tower property, and under Mayor Johnson, he proposed this artistic, uh, form. Now, I was kind of a mediator between the artist and Mayor Johnson.
That's kind of where I was.
Yeah.
That's fine, and I wanted to be clear on that, and, and the last part of this, thank you, Mayor McClendon, for allowing me to ask a question, the last part of this. Could that, the, the, uh, present park that you're asking about, could that not be maybe somewhere around where, where that particular segment is now?
Well, we don't have enough space. It's a very small space around the, um, water tower, and actually, we're having a fundraiser right now to sell bricks, inscribed bricks, to make a walkway around the tower. Um, I wish there were space there. We would like to, uh, recognize the water tower and celebrate it, and we're gonna try to do our taste of a town in an outdoor venue, and it will probably be, end up at the water tower. But, um, yes, it would be great if I could move it there, but there's just not enough space.
Thank you.
I got a question, and to be fair, can we do the same thing at nine-oh-one Broadway, Ninth Street, with a tree growing out the building? If you all tear that building down and do it right there, it's, it's pretty much right across the street from eight-oh-one?
I'm sorry, I, I, my hearing's not good.
It's another, it's another two buildings within Main Street property that has been, uh, condemned.
Mm-hmm.
And the first one is eight-oh-nine, which I did talk with Mr. Carpenter. He agreed with me and told me that the owner was trying to donate that property. And that property doesn't have a ceiling in it as well, but to have enough space right across, right exactly across the street at nine-oh-one Ninth Street, where you all see the trees and everything coming out the building and growing out the building, can Main Street use that, them funds to turn down that building and build this K-WM?
Well, we can't, uh, afford the demolition. We're asking you to take the demolition money and, and remove the walls, and that would cost less than tearing the whole thing down. Um, no, as long as somebody owns the property, we can't do anything but help them. We can't establish, and, and please remember, this is not a park, this is a venue. Um, we would like to have something that honors, you know, our, our history down there. And like I said, we've worked several years trying to find a venue for it. Um, the closest we can come is this, because the structure is still there and it's still sound. And honestly, if you take eight-oh-nine as well, um, we could put more money into that area and create a parklet. And a parklet is considered an area for older people to sit down, lights, mu, anybody wants to sit, stand up and play music, it's, you know, it's another form of taking a bad space and creating something wonderful. We don't have the funds to do both of them this year, but we do have the funds to help create the space, but we cannot take the building down, and we ask that you accept the building as a donation from the owner.
Thank you, Ms. Abernathy. Councilwoman Muhammad, did you need anything?
No, no, I'm, I'm just thinking that, I guess in my romanticism, I'm thinking of that, what she's proposing is something very, very beautiful, instead of just demolishing the entire building to use part of the structure to create, uh, an ambiance for the city of West Memphis and for visitors who may come and want to really enjoy and, and research and know our history. I was just, her proposal just sounds very idyllic to me. That's just me, my opinion.
Was there any other discussion? Mr. City Clerk, will you call the roll on that one?
Just want to make sure we're clarifying that there's a motion amendment to remove eight-oh-one from permission.
No, I want a second. Would never say.
Eight-oh-one, second.
All right. Okay.
No, this, this is just, uh, to remove both buildings.
To remove both buildings?
Yeah. Five-oh-one and eight-oh-one.
Totally. Just tear them totally down.
Do them just like that one on Seventh Street is, and hopefully, our economic development department can market some type of restaurant, some type of retail business. It gets a life back on Broadway.
If I may, then, um, there, there seems to be a great deal of possibility one way or the other with this eight-oh-one. And I'm in full support of, of taking down five-oh-one, that's for sure. Um, I'd like to make a motion that we go ahead and take five-oh-one East Broadway, uh, through the demo project, and in two weeks, you'll have all your final data, you have all your approvals in the state of Arkansas, and then we'll revisit that eight-oh-one in two weeks.
So you're amending that, you're making a motion to amend it?
That's my motion, yes.
Second.
Uh, any discussion? I, I, I got some discussion. I mean, I understand the idea, but these ideas have been here for years. It's, it's enough, but abandon buildings on Broadway to do anything, because I, I don't think we need to take that off. I think that would need, need done just as in worship's five-oh-one. They give out East Broadway, some type of, if you all see with, uh, with the, the construction company just did right there at Seventh Street, how clean that is, it just, it makes Broadway look totally different. And the ideas, I commend them on the ideals, but I mean, them ideas should have been there way before I came here, and they have it, so, even though I listen to Councilman Kay, I want to ask you all to, the, the, the not vote for that amendment. We need both of them go.
I want to ask them for two weeks for everybody to fully look at this whole, whole thing. In two weeks, if they don't want to, you can tear it down then.
Honestly, I, I know the councilman pretty much represented that war, been looking for him longer than two weeks, so. But that's, uh, motion in second, uh, call the roll.
Councilmember Bruce?
Yes.
Councilmember Kat?
Is this to tear it down for the amendment?
This is a amendment.
Eight-oh-one, run, permission request.
Councilmember Kat?
Yes. Need to go back.
Okay, go back to Bruce. Okay. Councilmember Bruce?
No.
Councilmember Kat?
Yes.
Councilmember Crum?
Yes.
Councilmember Harris?
No.
Councilmember Hope?
Yes.
Councilmember Hutchinson?
Yes.
Councilmember Muhammad?
Yes.
Councilmember Monday?
No.
There it is. Councilmember, Councilmember Willis?
Yes.
Okay. One, two, three, four, five, six, six yeses and one. Like you was note one, two, three, three no's.
All right, well, the amendment, it passed.
Two weeks.
Yeah, we'll come back in two weeks.
You're gonna have to come back in two weeks.
It will be on the agenda.
I promise, because I, I promise you all, I'm throwing veto in it, but two weeks, we're doing it in two weeks. All right, now, let's, uh, move forward with the, uh, the original permission request.
Councilmember Bruce? Hold your, you got a motion in second, hold it.
Yeah.
Those two, again.
Mr. Clerk, will you call the roll?
Okay.
We'll call the roll now.
Wait, you want, you want to get clarity on, can you, can you just have?
I mean, what, what has happened, the amendment has been approved to remove eight-oh-one from the demolition for two weeks. And we going right now to demo five-oh-one, which is the old railroad depot building.
Okay. So they understand, that's why I just make sure they understood, okay. Councilmember Bruce?
Yes.
Councilmember Kat?
Yes.
Councilmember Crum?
Yes.
Councilmember Harris?
Yes.
Councilmember Hope?
Yes.
Councilmember Hutchinson?
Yes.
Councilmember Muhammad?
Yes.
Councilmember Monday?
Yes.
Councilmember, Mary, that's, okay. Councilmember Willis?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, that, that passed, that, that old amendment passes, uh, so five oh one, we are moved, we proceed for moving it by. I'm just gonna say again, eight oh one will be on the agenda, on the next, on the next one, and I'm being honest, if, if that amendment asks for an extension, I will veto it.
We're not, we're, we're giving two weeks for, for the discussion, for you to bring the information back, correct, Ms. Abernathy? Correct, okay, I just want to show you, I want to say, please, ma'am, okay.
Alright. Uh, committee reports, uh, who all met? Police, man? Public Works meet?
Public Works has met, but we have not gotten our minutes, and I think the best thing for us to do is start taking our own minutes, because I don't like, you know, sitting and waiting for somebody else to provide me with minutes. So I think that we'll be taking our own minutes.
The fire meet yet? Chamber of Commerce?
I've got it, okay.
Parks?
I've got the chamber.
No.
Yeah, I'm, I'm just calling.
Excuse me, ma'am, I've got to get with Lorenzo. It's so very, very difficult, and I enjoy all of my meetings, attending and bringing back reports, but as of yet, we've not had any physical meetings, so hopefully, on the next council meeting, uh, we'll have some information for you. I know there's a lot going on about parks, and we really need that data to share with you all.
Airport.
Okay.
Airport, miss. Utility?
Uh, Utility did meet on July the eighth, uh, just got the minutes.
I'm just calling, I'm just calling out, uh, secret man. Am I forgetting any other commission?
Uh, what's the, the, the chamber?
Yeah, I got, I got Chamber, Airport, Utility, Police. Uh, no Fire, no Public Works, not the Minutes, Works, uh. Well, we'll start off with, uh, Police.
Yes, sir, the Police, Police Commission met on a special day and a special time, which was this past, um, Monday, July twelfth. Our time was four P M., which is not our regular scheduled date and time, but because of the holidays and other factors, we had to meet, um, on those days. We had members present, Chairwoman Lorraine Muhammad, uh, Melanie Hutchinson, Secretary, Commissioner James Hope, Commissioner Charles Willis. Member absent was Commissioner Willis Monday. Others we had here were Mayor Marco McClinton, Chief Michael Pope, Major Stacy Allen, Sergeant Daryl Hayes, City Clerk James Pulliam, Councilman Tracy Cat, Councilman Wayne Crum, Councilman David Murray, and Nick Coulter, Communications Director. Also present was Evening Times, John Rat. Chief Pope brought forth a very, very wonderful, um, expose of things that are going on within the Police Department. First of all, he talked about the stars and bars and the stat report. He thanked the local, state, and federal partners for their assistance in helping keep West Memphis safe on the Fourth of July weekend. His report stated that there were twenty-five felony arrests, ten misdemeanor arrests, seven firearms were seized, two ounces of cocaine, five grams of crack cocaine, two grams of methamphetamine, two hundred and fif- fifteen grams of marijuana, and one stolen A T V was recovered. Also, he brought forth a pamphlet about the D V C, that's the Department Vehicle Crash Review Board. This board reviews accidents that police officers are involved in while in pursuit. If officer, officers are found guilty, they will be dealt with according to their infraction. There were six incidents, and of those six, four were found guilty of the infraction. This program was put into effect on June first, and the last infraction was on June eleventh. So we can see that that program is really working well, well, there's not been, as far as our meeting of last Monday, there's not been any more, uh, traffic accidents with the police officers involved. He also brought forth a short video demonstration on how to use the Polar Wrap. This device can be used in place of the taser. This wrap, the wrap is dispensed, uh, and wrapped around the offender's leg and or upper body part, which is very effective. They can struggle and struggle, but it may take a while for them to get out of it if they can. The cost of one wrap is about nine hundred dollars, and of course, the people will be trained, whoever will be using these wraps, they will be trained to use the wraps effectively. Drone unit demonstration, which is very, very interesting. Sergeant Daryl Hayes used his personal drone to, to demonstrate the affected, effectiveness of the drone. The drone was used during the Fourth of July stars and bars apprehension. Chief Pope was very comical. He said people had lookouts, but they weren't looking up, so that's how a lot of that, a lot of those people were apprehended. It's a very good device to use in helping apprehend offenders. The cost is being discussed. I think one is like ten thousand dollars, but that's just for the minimum type drone. If we're gonna get any, two, three, however many, we need to go ahead and get the top of the line ones to keep from spending money backwards and for it. Also, Chief Pope discussed the need for police body cameras. If I'm not mistaken, this measure has been approved by City Council, and we're just waiting for officials to sign off on the document. And Mayor McClinton, where are we on, on getting those documents signed so we can go ahead and get these body cameras? Because we've already approved it.
Let me turn to the old city attorney.
Well, um, I have had some email contact with the lawyer who's gonna have to change the documents. The person who is the salesperson is not the person who changes the documents. It's actually done by their corporate counsel. And this company is owned, I think, by Motorola ultimately, and so that's who I end up having to talk to. Um, we've had some communication by email. There's gonna be, I've reviewed the contracts. There's gonna have to be some changes made to them that are our standard changes, which didn't sound like that was gonna be a problem, so I think, uh, you know, hopefully, we'll be able to do something soon.
Do you know, can you give me kind of like a timeline as Police Chairwoman, I'd like to kind of know.
No, ma'am, I can't. I can't control when other people are gonna get back in touch with me or make changes. I can tell you that my schedule is gonna be, uh, I'll be going on vacation at the end of this month myself, so during that period of time, we're not gonna get anything done. But, uh, I can only make inquiries, and then they've gotta get back in touch with me.
Is there anything the Police Commission can do to help you out?
I don't think so. It's a matter of talking to lawyers, so I don't think you wanna do that.
Right, right, since we're moving forward, and West Memphis is really on the move, on a winning streak, I was just thinking that perhaps since we have approved this measure a while back, and there did not seem to be any kind of conflicts with anything at that particular times, it appeared to me as though everything was moving forward, so I'm just, I was just really wondering why now that it's, it's been like two months, three months, how long?
No, ma'am, it hadn't been two months. Uh, I think I first, uh, had some kind of contact in, in June.
In June?
So, yes, ma'am. Uh, so, um, no, it hadn't been two months, and I read the contracts right when I got them, and I made contact with the people that I was supposed to, and I don't know what their schedule is. I don't know what their vacation is. It's summertime. A lot of people take vacation, as you well know, because you work with the school.
Right.
Uh, so, uh, I can't speak for somebody else's schedule who hasn't contacted me back.
Okay, it's just that we've never, whenever we've wanted something like this, we haven't had a lot of confusion, but you're right, we do not control anybody's vacation time
Sure do.
or their schedules, but I'm hoping that we can get this issue resolved as soon as possible, because we know nationwide how important it is for the police officers to have those body cameras, not just for the citizens, but for the officers themselves.
Well, there's some things that need to be ironed out on, on how they're gonna be redacted. Uh, the redaction is a big question for me in my office, and there's some things that we need to work out about that, um, because right now, Freedom of Information requests, uh, burden, overburden us in my office. We have two, uh, people that can take care of that right now, and we're overburdened with F O I right now. We get at least four to five requests a week, um, so when we get body cameras, and that means we're gonna have more requests, which are gonna require more redaction capabilities. So, one of the things that concerns me about the body cameras is that there are privacy interests of the public that will be involved here, and, and when you go into somebody's house, or when you see someone who has children, those children, um, have a right not to have their faces disclosed. So that means you've gotta get into the camera and figure out, you know, how it's gonna be redacted, the film and all that. So, that's one of the main issues I'm concerned about. I think the chief and I are supposed to meet, uh, sometime in the future. I know that he was on vacation, and so I respected that, and I'm sure that's something that he'll respect with me, uh, when I do that, but yeah, I'm working on it. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, I just wanted to know, because that was one of the things that we were concerned with.
There's a lot more to it than just signing the contracts and getting it done.
I know, I understand, I understand, I understand a little bit of law, alright. Uh, that ends my report.
Chamber of Commerce?
Chamber of Commerce, they, they didn't meet in July because that was what they considered a heavy vacation month. So they don't meet, but, but the office itself had been working on the banquet and preparing for the upcoming leadership programs. They also helped acquire vendors for the Freedom Fest, and, uh, they're involved with the city's Touch a Truck event in August. So they have been busy doing things, at, at least the staff has been. That completes that report on the Chamber. The, uh, Utility Commission, uh, we met on July the eighth. Uh, the first thing they did, of course, was approve June's minutes, uh, without any corrections. Uh, the second item they talked about was safety. Uh, safety, they have gone two hundred and forty days since their last recordable injury, and six hundred and twenty-four days since the lost time inquiry, and, uh, those are, those are some pretty good numbers with the number of people that are employed by our Utility Commission. Uh, the third thing on the item was the, uh, uh, General Manager Todd Peterson brought up the personnel data, and we're still have ten open positions out of eighty-three budgeted positions. Then there was an item brought up about, uh, wet wipes and what they're doing to the collection system. That was brought up and talked about by Denise Bozwick, who is our Director of Environment Quality, and, uh, she said the flushable wipes are actually costing thousands of dollars in repair bills. They have sent out a, a notice with utility bills informing our customers not to flush the flushable wipes, uh, and, uh, because it costs too much to come out and clean out the sewer lines. And, um, the fifth item that was talked about was the twenty-twenty financial audit. It was approved, uh, on unanimous vote, and the last thing that was talked about was, um, Assistant Manager, General Manager Ward Wimbish talked about, or discussed approving a, a consulting firm to come in and feasibly study the West Memphis Utility Commission's, uh, providing internet. And that motion had been approved also. And that concludes the, uh, Utility Commission.
Airport?
Yes, I was real short this morning. We met on the seventh and the fifteenth, which was this morning at eight o'clock. Highlights from today's commission meeting. The commission approved a fifty-nine thousand dollar grant through the American Rescue Plan Act twenty-twenty-one, which this is a COVID relief grant. Hangar number three rehab is nearing completion, so I don't want, don't like much having that completed, and that's the end of the report.
Alright. Were there any other commissions that I may have missed? Okay, I have no, um, presentation. I do have two and-
One man, I mean, he's, he has to be the next, uh, what's his name?
John Dotson? Okay, okay. I had no presentations. Uh, I did have two announcements. Um, I just want everyone to be aware of the COVID. Uh, we having an uptick in, we're not in this county. We have now forty-two cases of the coronavirus. We, the city of West Memphis got all the way down to under eight cases, but that forty-two nu- that forty-two cases is the number, including the entire county, not just West Memphis, so I just want everyone to, to be cautious and wear your mask and still do the things the CDC asks us to, to follow as much as possible, and, uh, we go from there.
I just want to say something before you close down.
Okay, yeah, uh, so make sure you be cautious. Also, I just wanna, just give you a quick tidbit on something, uh, you know, I'm very passionate about things. I don't mean to be over passionate, but, uh, yesterday, I got a phone call, and I've been working with Mr. Jim Jackson and Steve Jones and Nick Coulter. We got a possib- well, not a possibility, I have a confirmation that Grandma Ward, when, uh, Barbara Rush would be coming here to do a book signing, as well as, uh, we working with Ms. Shirley Brown, who was off Sixteenth Street. Uh, we are, I'm, we, our person reached out to, uh, we in the process of reaching out to Reverend Al Green, and, um, Decatur Car, I talked with Decatur Car Grandma Ward, uh, when Decatur Car fought last night about coming to, to do a exhibit to expose our music history, and I'm, I'm saying it to say that, that we done that in less than twenty-four hours. That building been running for fifteen years, and now they nothing been done, and it got an opportunity still on our streets, and I just think respectfully, it was the wrong call. It was time for it to go. Um, we had a citizen request of Mr. John Dotson. He's not here. I hope that I can talk with him and get everything, uh, figured out, so he won't have to come before you, but if he do, it'll be the next council meeting. Was there anything else that we need to add?
I can ask you something?
Yes, ma'am.
Have y'all figured out what you're gonna, with the wipes? Can you put it on their light bill and put a note in the, in the, on the, uh, attached to their light bill when they mail them out?
They did, they did this month. They're putting a, a flyer in, in the light bill and sending it out.
Okay.
So, when they get their energy bill, and Todd may help me out here, but when they get their energy bill, it's gonna talk about not flush, flushing the flushable wipes.
Alright, okay.
That might have been what happened in my house, Todd.
Todd, did you want to come up speed on that?
I, I did.
Have they flushed my wipes?
There is going to be a flyer going out this month that is a, just a quick synopsis, and it has a couple pictures on it. The pictures, uh, one of them is of a, one of our pumps that we've pulled at our pump stations, and you'll see a bunch of rags. It looks like rope around the pump, and then you'll see where they've had, they've cut it away. What happens is those flushable wipes become a ball of string, and our smaller pumps, uh, cannot handle them, and they're causing us thousands of dollars in the system. If they get into your pipe, your own pipes, they can stop up. And we've seen an increase in this since the shortage of tissue paper. Um, it seems people have transitioned to, and I know Nick has put a couple things on the social medias, but we're also putting this. It, it would help us greatly if people, we understand they wanna use them, but they are not flushable wipes. And this is not a West Memphis only. This is a nationwide problem, so there's cities across this country who have actually outlawed the selling of them in their city. There are cities who have done multiple things. It's just very hard to control, you know, citizens wanna do what they want, but it costs themselves money at times.
Thank you. Yeah, that concludes, uh-
I got a request, if you don't mind.
I got your answer.
Go, go ahead.
Uh, I would like to see the Parks Director here at the next meeting, because it's been over six months since we've heard anything from the Parks.
Let me, let me do this. I, I will, I will get the Parks Director here, but he wouldn't be in an open forum. If we were going to executive session, because I would not discuss personnel in an open forum, but I would get him here in the council, we, the council and the mayor can meet with, uh, uh, Mr. Park, and talk about whatever issues you all need to get done.
Okay.
And we can actually do that before council meeting, if you all got a day. I can make sure I, you all just get together on a day you wanna meet him in a time, and I make sure I have him here. Was there any other thing for any city council person? Miss City Clerk?
Yeah, um, first of all, I wanna really commend Todd Peterson, Utility General Manager, for, um, getting on the ball with the internet service. And I've been talking about it for what, a couple, two, three years, right, and I'm, I'm, I wanna commend him for getting on the ball with that. I'm quite sure the citizens of West Memphis, they'll be glad to see this, if, you know, if it comes to, you know. And another thing that I want to say, um, we wanna bring this up, like, a lot of the recorders that's going out to the different meetings, they're not coming back to the City Clerk's office, so what we need, ma'am, is everyone to start, each commission start purchasing their own recorder, because we're not getting them back. And another thing-
Which is, um, six recorders for commissions and label them and-
Okay.
You all's office, because I think they need to be under you all's supervision.
Okay, okay, no problem. We just not getting them back, that's the problem.
Give me the price on them, and I mean, that can't be that, that can't be that much.
Okay, and like I say, like you said, it should be brought directly back to us, and then, like City Attorney mentioned a minute ago, uh, we getting a lot of F O I's here- then, like City Attorney mentioned a minute ago, uh, we getting a lot of FOIs here and there, and the minutes, it's very important that you turn your minutes in, because someone could ask for them. And if you, if we don't have them, then, you know, we, we supposed to have them at, you know, before the next council meeting, at least. So we could get the minutes back, so we can get them recorded, you know, like we should, just in case someone did ask, we'll have them.
May I ask you a question?
Naptology, just like, um, we pull in a question. Andrew Sudo emails at the same time she's emailing to her commission. If going forward, if you guys are getting your minutes emailed to you, suggest that they also email the city clerk on that.
Let, let, let me ask this question, just for clarity. Isn't, correct me if I'm wrong, isn't it the responsibility of the elected secretary of that?
Of, of, of that commission, yes. Well, someone, but they should, according to the ordinance, each one should have their own secretary of the commission, if you go back and look at the ordinance, that's what it says.
Cause I hate to put that pressure on Ms. Sudo or, uh, Mr. Barner or...
Whoever the secretary of the commission, yeah, yeah.
I'd like to ask a question, as far as the minutes are concerned, of course, um, do you want the handwritten drafts? Cause a lot of times you write down a lot, I was in, in a deposition at one particular time some years back, and not only did they want the typed minutes, but they wanted the handwritten ones as well.
Well, two things supposed to happen, of course, you know, you don't have to write, you know, verbatim, but at the same time, we got to have the recorded minutes, because we got to keep them for one year.
All right, and the minutes are not... Until they're approved, you're not official, so I don't think any handwritten wouldn't be official, unless it's approved.
Well, we're working on that tomorrow, and, uh, sign the one to everyone. And matter of fact, uh, Mr. Clerk, it may be good if you had a checkout system?
Yeah.
So whoever come get it, if we know they got to bring it back. Uh, were there anything else?
That's it.
I got a motion second to adjourn?
No, ma'am.
All right, everybody, ah, opposed?